Oh, I'm crying out loud. Everything's going off my house.
All right, it is six o'clock, so I'm gonna start the meeting since we have a quorum, and we're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. So I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
To the republic.
Which stands one nation
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
For all. Including Hillary.
I heard that, Charlie. This is a nonpartisan meeting. Begin with the, just give me a moment, I gotta read my little script here. Okay, as Chairman of the Board of Selectmen for the town of Newton, New Hampshire, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe or listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are utilizing Zoom conferencing software for this electronic meeting. All members of the Board have the ability to communicate during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen, and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number: (646) 876-9923. The meeting ID number in Zoom is (904) 045-7732, where they can use the link provided here. I'm not gonna read you the link. We previously gave the notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the conference call via telephone. If anyone has a problem, please email bossecretary@newtonnh.net. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. So, let's do a roll call attendance right now. I know we have Diane, Nancy, it looks like Tina's on, Charlie and Larry are on. Who else do we have on?
Trisha.
Trish, Woman of the Hour, somebody else?
This is Terry.
Hi, Terry.
Hi, there.
Pete.
Pete's on, anybody else?
Yep.
Chief Jewett.
And Chief Jewett's on, okay. So.
Matt.
Hi.
Al Cadino's on, but I think he needs to be unmuted or muted. He just texted me.
If I had a choice, I'd leave him on mute, but I think I need to unmute him.
Okay.
Hold on, he's in the waiting room, I think, okay. Let me see the waiting room. Gonna, oh, and we have two Select Board members, too. Should I bring them in? Do we wanna vote?
Yeah.
They're all joining, okay.
Thank you.
No problem. I was on the fence about it, Chief, but, you know.
Trust me, my friend, so was I.
Right. So, let's have Trish do her thing, if you wouldn't mind.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, so I have a few meetings to report on. So the first is yesterday morning. We have, at the time, I'll give you the updated numbers, but as of yesterday, 3,006,52 persons with COVID in New Hampshire, 1,0269 have recovered, and 172 deaths. They talked about the health and fitness, and I've sent out some flyers, and I'll forward them to all the department heads and the selectmen, talking about things that, just updates of, you know, one of them was how long does the virus stay on surfaces, and it talks about the different surfaces. It's actually a great flyer, so I will share that with everybody. They also talked about new PPE shipping arriving, a huge amount of warehouse operations, the plane that came in yesterday, and another truck came in this morning. They said that the Civil Air Patrol and the Liquor Enforcement were stepping up to assist because it was that much inventory. They also said there has been over 3,000 mission tasks submitted as of today. And so, a mission task for all of you that may not remember, is we need items, whether it's for our town hall, whether it's for our first responders. Our recreation has stepped forward and asked for things. We have to put them on a mission, a mission task, and that's where we get our inventory from. So that, there's a lot of mission tasks going out because obviously more and more people are doing what we're trying to do. Think about how we're gonna open our town halls and buildings. They talked about a staff at Hampton Beach working on a communication project for lifeguards. They're trying to figure out a way that they can communicate easily and still keep the social distancing, keep them away from each other and training. I don't know, maybe they should just sit up in those chairs, I don't know. They also wanted us to know, we have 23 first responders that have tested positive. Thirty-six first responders are being tracked, and out of that 36, 14 of them are fire departments, 20 are police departments, and two are EMS. We currently have 44 members of first responders in alternative clothing. They also talked about, and I've kinda taken out the things that are irrelevant. They talked about retail and restaurant openings, they've had a lot of issues. We actually, in this town, had one with one of our establishments, and actually the EMD and the health agent had to get involved. They weren't complying with the Governor's guidelines, so they had to step in to get involved with that. I'm sure we'll see more of those kind of things happening, probably in lots of places. Yesterday, our legal call was pretty extensive. So, some of the things they talked about is the stipend forms, and they said that fill out the forms, which we have done. We've gotta keep them on file. And they said that the logs actually protect us if we ever got audited, which obviously we know. While they were talking about logs, they also talked about the logs that the police and fire, and eventually all our town buildings, will have to do. And we're calling it the COVID screening logs. I actually sent that out to Pete and Terry today, so hopefully you got them. You don't have to use the one I sent you, but at least it's a guide. This protects the town, so some people have said on these calls, well, how does it protect us? The reason it protects is if, let's say I'm coming to work, and I come in and I fill out the log, I take my temperature, I answer the questions, have I had a cough, have I been near anyone? You know, do I have gastrointestinal issues? There's questions on the top of those forms. If any of that is happening to me, obviously, I'm gonna not come in. But if we fill it out correctly, and then you go about your business, if somebody down the road then comes into that building, whether it's the town hall, the library, the transfer station, and all of a sudden comes down with something, they can try to point to us and say, hey, well, I was at town hall, it must be you guys, or it must be the transfer station. These logs are what will protect us, and say, really? Well, everyone that worked cares how they checked in, so we're good to go. So again, we're gonna have to keep those log sheets. Pete, if you need me to, if you don't like the one I sent you, I can help you with another one. But we need to keep those in a file, and probably each town building. You don't need to send them, I don't think, unless Larry wants them, to him. The police department are keeping their own, fire department's keeping their own, and probably town hall, transfer station, and libraries should do the same. But again, that protects us, that covers the town. They also talked, if an employee's working overtime, the towns are the towns, that's the question, required to factor in the stipend into their overtime rate. This got a lot of conversation on the call, and the answer was, the Department of Labor said absolutely yes. So if this stipend puts them on overtime, that overtime rate has to be factored in. They talked about racetracks. It's not real important to us unless somebody wants to go to the races. That's the only reason I'm sharing it. And it said that the racetracks, the question was, can they hold practices with only 10 persons max in the group? And can they open under the safe guidelines that I have come forward from the task force? And they said, yes, you gotta follow the guidelines. They also said that the Governor spoke yesterday regarding the 10 people or less, and it's okay. Reminding us that that Executive Order 16 is still in effect, and remember, I've got those all posted. Larry had me put them on the EMD site, so if you're not sure what the orders are, they're there. And the exception is, you can allow 10 or less. Then there was talk about motels and Airbnbs. And still essential workers only was the question. Is that the only people that can work there? And then they followed it up with a question saying, if booked through Expedia, for example, and asked if essential, then can the customers book? And what kind of guidance do we have on this? And the answer was, refer to the Executive Order. I have those on the website as well. There's no more current guidelines on reopening lodging, so they really want you to refer to the Executive Order, or the Emergency Orders, rather, and that one is Order 27. And it completely spells out what is considered essential. The New Hampshire Municipal Association actually had a question. Outside, my goodness, I can't talk. Outside seating created in spaces that were not designed for it, like for instance, a parking lot, are there liability arrangements for this kind of seating? Because now customers are exposed to this, and it wasn't previously approved as a seating area by the town. So Primex did say, and Primex was on a couple of calls, that they did issue a bulletin, so hopefully Nancy got this, other than the one that she forwarded us today, which we also have. But they sent out a bulletin on Monday to all the members, talking about this. And talked about your damage caps would apply, and approve these through a permitting process, and put reasonable conditions within the permit. So that, you know, Nancy, that's your department, sort of, and maybe the selectmen have to look at whatever these reasonable conditions are with that permit, in case it has to be tweaked a little bit. A lot of people are tweaking their policies to deal with our new environment, so it's probably something that should be on our action list. And then, availability of first responder certification forms. They reminded us, they just need to be filled out and kept on file at the Emergency Management Office. We do not submit them, we're just using it as a backup. Then there was a question on the public. Do we have to have a public hearing to accept grant money? You guys probably covered this last night, but the answer is no, you don't have to have a public hearing. Grants for emergency management purposes may be accepted by the executive officers, town manager, or the Board of Selectmen. So hopefully that helps that particular question that you dealt with last night. This morning, we had another call, and they just wanted us to know that there was a lot of testing done in communities, and 420 more tests were scheduled today. Remember, the more tests we have, sometimes it tweaks our percentages, but we're still on a downward trend. There's a lot of tests, but percentage-wise, we're still doing well. We had 23, again, it's almost the same as yesterday. Twenty-three first responders tested positive, 36 are being tracked. Now, the numbers are a little different. Sixteen of them are fire, being tracked, 18 are being police, and two EMS are still being tracked. They also talked about the online trends of social media, what's going on. And there's a lot to talk about, face masks, obviously state unemployment, and a lot of talk about beaches and Memorial Day. I did talk to Matt yesterday, I talked to Mike Povero last night. And just to cover the town, again, I realize everybody is saying we're gonna have the parade, but in order to cover us, we need to get it kind of vetted and make sure that, as Diane put on the website, there's no stopping. We'll probably do an alert message this weekend, basically asking the people to please enjoy the parade from your yard and not necessarily line up along the edge of the street, so that we're practicing our social distancing, and more importantly, not looking like a gathering of more than 10 people. Then, the second call today was, they wanted us to know, we had, now have nine testing sites, and the two new ones are in Londonderry and Keene. And it's wonderful, they're working so hard, it's making the testing very easy for the public. Again, our first responders still go to convenient MD, and we get a fairly quick turnaround. You do oftentimes have to follow up after we send a first responder there. Sometimes, they're probably so overwhelmed, they don't call us back, so the department would have to call them for results. As far as our numbers go, as of today, we have 3,856 persons with COVID in New Hampshire, and unfortunately, that's up 204 from yesterday. And yesterday's numbers are really, they really come in at nighttime, so that's really from, say, Monday night. We have 1,275 that have recovered, that's up 6. And we have unfortunately 190 deaths attributed to COVID. Nine new ones were all in a long-term care facility, but unfortunately, this 190 is up 18 from yesterday. There was talk, the AG's office got involved, about private pools and beaches that are run by associations, and they actually can open up with discretion. They are private property. They can be opened, but not scheduled gatherings of more than 10. I guess the best example of that might be over at the campground. They do have a pool, it's considered private. So if they have no more than 10 people, then it's gonna be permitted. They're saying that outdoor dining locations was a big discussion with the AG's office. Because now that they're dining outdoors, they want entertainment outdoors. So the answer today was, they can have a solo artist perform, but not a band. They're actually waiting on guidance for bands. So see, if they have a band, we're all gonna go to Charlie's house so that we can hear the bands. Not really, let's hope they don't do that, Charlie. Then, another police department, a police chief said, is there any guidance on the summer town recreational activities, like that are held, due to a municipality, like let's say Recreation Committee? And whether they can or cannot do this? And their second question was, can town youth sports fields now be open? And their third question was, will there be guidance for the public health staff in regard to COVID-19 when dealing with the public sites, whether it's the sports field or recreation activity starting? So their answers were, town-run summer programs could potentially run. They said the stay-at-home 2.0 order does not apply to municipalities. However, they said to wait until the reopening task force actually addresses this, and that's supposed to happen this week. Then they said that the town youth sports fields are also gonna be addressed by the reopening task force. So if at all possible, kind of hold off on maybe publicizing what you might wanna do in this public sports fields or recreation facilities. And then lastly, they said they're working on email address and phone number access for health officers in dealing with these entities as they start to open. Then we had another person, actually a health officer, wanted to know about yard sales. And you probably remember, we talked about this on Monday, because as of Friday, they were allowed. And again, you still have to have social distancing, not more than 10 people in the yard sale. And then the other question was, can boat clubs open? And the answer is docks, their thinking are gonna be too close together to allow for social distancing. So they're saying that boat clubs, or entities that have docks, may not be allowed to open their recreational buildings and may have to space out the docks. But they're gonna follow up with us later on that. Racetracks, again, the question this time was, can the racetracks open to out-of-staters? And you'll probably remember, we did talk about this. They still need to quarantine for 14 days. So the track would, I don't know how that's gonna happen. The track would have to take precautions and push out information about the quarantine time. But they did say they're gonna follow up with us, and they're gonna put the answer in our situat, sit reports at the end of the day. It wasn't there when we left today, though, so I'll get back to you with that on, I guess, next week. Then, another health officer said, do we need to rope off all sides of outdoor dining, you know, or have a restaurant, you know, rope out all the outside dining? And the answer was, use your discretion. You could also call the Liquor Association, the Liquor Commission, for more information, because they've got probably stricter guidelines. And the second question from that health agent was, will the state park day beaches be open? And they said the day beaches will be addressed by the reopening task force. They talked about paragraph nine on page four of the State Park guidance, and said we can refer to that, but again, they're still working on this, and they'll get, they're working every single day, as Charlie knows, and they'll get back to us. An EMD wanted, asked a question. Our moderator for the school meetings is hoping to hold a drive-through meeting. Can this be done? Is there some kind of guidance? And the answer is, this is actively being worked on with the Secretary of State's office and the election attorney. The town of Beau actually already encountered this as well, and said we could reach out to them, or this office could reach out to them if they wanted more information on it. And then Larry and I asked, because this is great that we can actually ask questions and get live answers, where they were talking about beaches, we had, we get calls on beaches. We said we haven't opened our local beach yet. And our question is, can people launch canoes or other small boats? And the answer is, inland beach guidance pertains only to the state park inland beaches. They said the stay-at-home order exempt towns. So you have the discretion, as a local town, to open or not open your beach. Our second question was, we're working on a soft open for our town buildings. And we had talked, we talked about this yesterday, and we wanna know if we're supposed to be posting this because of 91A. And the answer was, absolutely yes. Your task force should post, and the 91A noticed their meetings. And I said, what if we weren't appointed? We're just a task force. And they said, because we're considered a public body, you don't even have to be appointed, but you should still post that you're having a meeting. You don't have to post an agenda, and somebody should take minutes. And then we talked about, I asked, because we're reopening, is there any guidance? These task forces for the Governor are doing so much, it would be awesome to have something that we could follow, because obviously, this is all new to all of us. And they actually said they're gonna forward it, they thought it was a great idea. Primex was on the call, Dave was on the call, and he said, if we go to his site, that there's a document, and one of the three documents that he actually sent to the web EOC is one that Nancy sent. It's a risk management document, and that will help. It's got information from CDC and OSHA, along with legal. So it's not, you know, it's a little bit of what we want, and it's great that he's sharing it, and he put it on the web EOC, so now everyone has access to it. And then another town said, see, here you go, Larry, they agreed with you. They said, I agree with Newton EMD. It would be helpful if the task force would come up with something addressing municipalities' opening. It's so much easier to have something to follow that then can be explained to the selectmen. And the answer was, yep, they're gonna push it forward to the task force. There was another town that said, again, they were talking about racetracks, and they wanted to know, are they only open for practices? And what about the gathering? And again, they said, under the guidance, it says the outdoor activities are allowed, but again, it can't be a large gathering, that would violate the order. And if you're having a problem with that, contact your local police chief. And that is it for all my meetings.
Excellent, thank you. There's a lot there. All right, anything, anybody has on COVID-19 that they wanna bring up in this meeting?
Yeah, Matt, I do.
Go ahead, Charlie.
On them tests that were taken, there was 51 in one rest home over in Manchester that they tested. They tested the whole building, and they found 51 in that one place. And the second thing is, I don't know if Trish got this or not, but real estate agents do not have to do their credits. They don't have to get to pay for it, notarized by a JP. They can file online and pay online, and that's it.
Yay!
Wow. The, where, what I'm interested to see is how many of these kind of temporary things become permanent later on? Once things show that they, you never know, so. All right, anybody else have anything? I just have two things related. First of all is, I wanna make sure we do this. I wanna thank all of those, let me back up. We know Monday's Memorial Day. The easiest thing in the world would be due to the current pandemic and the restrictions from the state to just cancel everything. So we could cancel the parade, we could cancel the honor ceremony, we could just wait until next year. That'd be the easiest thing in the world. Most people would not really blink an eye at that, they would understand. But we have a lot of people in this town that are yes people, meaning they will tell you, when they're asked to volunteer, they will tell you yes, they will find a way to do it. And those are the people who are going to be involved in this parade on Monday. And again, it's a socially distant parade. Every single member of this parade is a volunteer. They would very much like to have a day to spend with their families on Monday. Although, side joke, we've spent a lot of time with our families lately, haven't we? But that's a whole nother thing. But they would love that extra non-work day, but they're gonna take some time out of their day to do this parade to honor our veterans. And they're going to stage a parade that, they've developed a route that may not come to where, to every street you want it to, but they are going to do their best to honor the veterans by going to drive by as many houses as they can, as many landmarks as they can. And we need to look at the big picture. They're all volunteering to do this, they're taking time out of their day. If we ask them to hit every road in town, the fire chief can tell you about the Santa Parade. That is an all-day, 18-hour event. And I don't think we should ask anybody to do that. So I congratulate these folks, we all know who they are, who stepped up and said, we're gonna make this happen on Monday, it's gonna be a beautiful day. And I wanna ask the residents to abide by social distancing. And I want to ask the residents to abide by social distancing restrictions. We all know what they are, right? No more than groups of 10, or no groups larger than 10, I should say. And when you see these folks go by, remember, yes, they're honoring our fallen heroes on Memorial Day, but these are also the same people that have been working hard all through this pandemic as first responders to help us, so that when we make that 911 call at 2:00 a.m., somebody still comes to our door. Not just somebody. A lot of people come to our door. They're taking a risk every time they do that. So, on Monday, when they drive by your house, you have the opportunity to cheer them and give them recognition. So, I would ask that everybody spend, you know, part of the day, think about those veterans we've lost over the years, our family members, our friends, but at the same time, keep an eye out for those first responders who are taking this time to do this for you, for the residents, and thank them. So, that's all I have on that one.
Thank you.
So, Monday is Memorial Day. As I said, that's a holiday. I would like to entertain any motion or anything to cancel the COVID meeting from Monday night. Anybody into that?
Yay!
Hey!
All right. That was a tough sell, so I don't think we need a motion, so we'll just cancel that. Take it off the calendar, and till Wednesday, a week from tonight, will be the next time we meet. So, I hope there's no emergencies in the meantime, but if there are, anybody can reach out to me, and if we need to convene an emergency meeting, we can. But I think, I think we're getting to, again, we all know this isn't over, but we're getting to a kind of a new normal, where we're getting things addressed very quickly, and we're functioning. So, hopefully, we will be okay for a week, and it'll be a good test case in case we want to, you know, maybe restrict how often we're meeting. I know my wife votes for that, so that's one vote, so. All right. Anything else for this meeting?
This is Diane.
Diane.
Chief Jewitt had sent, I forwarded you an email from Chief Jewitt. I didn't know if you wanted to take that up.
If it's the one I'm thinking of, I don't think we need to in this meeting. Thank you, though. That was more, I believe the chief will chime in if I'm wrong, but that was more of a socialization with the Board of Selectmen to make sure they had no objections. And I don't think we need to. It's basic, you know, business line item stuff, so.
Okay.
Thanks. All right. Anything else?
Vote into a jury?
Okay, so that's Charlie. A second on that?
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. All in favor? We're all in favor.
Aye.
All right. So, everybody have a good night. Have a great Memorial Day weekend, and we'll talk to you next week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night.